And the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes of the August nineteenth meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
I.
Three to zero in favor. Madam Finance.
Morning.
Morning.
So, book where you have warrant number seventy-two in the sum of three hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars. Biggest pieces of this includes our health insurance, our main purse retirement payment, the payment to Siemens Industry for the Comp Center HVAC project, the payment to Gail Associates, who is our contractor for the public safety complex project, and the main CMP bill for them.
We have a motion, please.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant number seventy-two for three hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred forty-one dollars even.
Seconded.
Move seconded. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Moving on to warrant seventy-four in the sum of four hundred forty-four thousand four twenty-five twenty-three. Biggest pieces of this is the September jail assessment, purchase of three Dodge Durangos, purchase of a license plate reader and installation of prison equipment. The license plate reader is grant funded and we will be receiving funding back from that as soon as I be able to submit information to the state.
I have a motion, please.
Sure, I will move that we approve accounts payable warrant number seventy-four for four hundred forty-four thousand four hundred twenty-five twenty-three.
Seconded.
Move seconded. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
We had to payroll number seventeen for the year in the sum of two hundred sixty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. Not a whole lot to say. We're kind of hard for the course at this point.
Motion, please.
Move to approve payroll warrant twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
Second. Move seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
I have a request to get approval to move some fund balances around in Fund Two in our reserve accounts. We put some money away for the bicentennial project a couple of years ago that never got fully expended. I'd like permission to shift those funds into our health, uh, uh, safety and wellness reserve account for future projects.
Is that just a zero of that account and then?
It allows us to.
Pocket somewhere.
Allows us to spend the money on something.
Could we have a motion?
Move to allow the transfer of bicentennial fund into Wellness and Safety Fund for future use.
Second. Move seconded. Anyone have any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
And on August twentieth, we received our approval letter from the state for paid family medical leave program to be in-house, self-funded and self-administered. I would like to move the crude liability that we had generated for the third quarter that is not required to go to the state into its own reserve account within Fund Two for the future funding of that program, uh, which will take effect effective May first of next year.
How much is that? That's in the account that?
Right now, it's seventy-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Um, but we will work towards funding that up to the full amount of the bond, which is seventy thousand.
Is there a motion?
Um, you need a motion to put the seventy-nine into its own account.
Yes. They'll move.
Seconded.
And seconded.
Okay.
Please, so thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Got that.
Right, right.
Does it?
Oh, my kids doesn't say their emotion.
Where they are, um, allocated funds, I have that permission.
Tell them to move to my name.
Thank you. Yeah.
From.
Not look particularly good morning.
Good morning. You know Adobe Acrobat has a redaction feature.
You must like smell like a sharpie.
We have that discussion. There's that. Even Adobe aren't necessarily.
Usually we're low on the totem pole.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. It looks like our jail count this morning out at Two Bridges is one seventy-two. I guess that was, uh, are those today's numbers, chief? Did they get updated?
Yesterday.
Those are yesterday's numbers. Um, and so we have thirty of those. Yesterday we did anyway. Today, uh, let's see Saget Hawk at twenty-three. Knox has nineteen fifty-six from Penobscot, twenty-eight from Waldo. Um, I wonder what a B O R D is.
Border Patrol.
A border patrol detainee. That's good. Uh, we don't have those very often and they only stay for a short period of time before they go off to, um, before they go off to Portland to be processed. When I say detainee, I mean criminal detainee. I want to be very clear.
Thank you for.
Yes.
Literifying.
Um, three federal inmates and twelve from ICE. If you don't have any questions on the account, the only other item I have this morning is a, uh, purchase authorization. Well, it's a payment authorization really for repair on a, a collision that one of our cruises was, uh, was involved in. This is, uh, post our use of risk pool, uh, funds. Uh, we owe Hillside thirty-three oh seven twelve.
What did the risk pool cover?
Risk pool covers everything but twenty-five hundred.
Uh, it's on the green form how much we're getting.
Thirteen ninety-three-two. And they've already paid.
That's good.
We have a motion, please.
Move to approve the purchase authorization to Hillside Collision Center for three thousand three hundred seven dollars and twelve cents.
Second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
So Commissioner, I, um, just for a future, maybe at your next meeting, I, I don't know. I would love to, I, I mentioned this, I think, to Commissioner Lebec. Um, I can't remember if it was at the barbecue here or the, maybe it was Commissioner Gudkowski here. Um, I would like to have some time with the board, um, in a work session. There are a number of things that we have going on at the sheriff's office that I'd like to bring you up to speed about. Um, it's nothing, uh, nothing earth shattering. Um, you know, it ranges from, uh, you know, what some budget priorities that we have. I know you begin to delve into the budget, um, and, uh, I need, I'm gonna need some clarification on where we're gonna go with, um, in the future with Operation Stone Garden and, and other grant, other federal grant monies that we depend on. Um, so I would just like to have some, some time with you at some point. I don't want to do it today. But, uh, when you, when you have time, um, so we can talk in more detail about some of those things.
Well, we could, after the meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. If you have time, I don't, I, I know, I don't want to pop it on you last minute. I just want to plant the seed so we could schedule, uh, schedule something. It could easily be at your next meeting, um, or your first meeting in October for that matter, if you have time. Um, and it shouldn't take us long. I mean, other than, you know, depending on how much questions, how many questions you might have and you may have other budget workshops coming up, I'm sure, probably, um, with us, maybe not. So that's up to you, but, uh, you know what I mean? Uh, so, uh, so, you know, we don't have to spend a lot of time on that. If we, if you have other time planned for that, I'm not sure what your budget's gets like, things like that.
This agenda does seem light, so afterwards seems to make sense for me.
Yep.
Great, thank you very much.
I could be harder later.
Great, thank you.
We'll give you a call.
Great, thank you.
Planning Office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, morning commissioners. My name is Curtis Brown. I'm the land use and transportation planner with the planning commission. Um, we are here this morning, um, seeking approval to travel outside of the state for the U S DOT Thriving Communities Grant that we've been working on. Um, this grant seeks to, um, complete a rural transit feasibility study for the mid-coast region. So that'll be everything from Bath Brunswick up until, um, Belfast area. This grant is a, um, collaboration with Mid Coast Council of Governments and Waldo Community Action Partners based out of Belfast. Um, Laura Graziano are, um, uh, my colleague and myself will both be traveling to this conference, which will be held in Anaheim, California. Um, we will also be joined by Reed Silver from Mid Coast, um, from a Mid Coast, uh, MCog, thank you. Um, so we're, all of the funds for this, um, for this, um, convening will be covered by U S DOT. That includes air travel, ground travel, um, and, uh, housing while we're there. Um, so we are just looking for approval to travel outside of the state, um, during working hours. Thank you.
Could we have a motion?
Move to approve travel for Curtis Brown, Laura Graziano to Anaheim.
That will form.
Second.
Move seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
Is this like the trip you took to DC?
Yes, it'll be similar. Yeah. No, no federal speakers this time, but just.
Okay.
When is this, when is this happening?
This will be, sorry, I forgot to mention, it'll be October twenty-first to October twenty-four.
So after baseball seasons, you can't go see the Angels.
Stop play. Just in time for the Ducks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speeding right along.
We are a little bit.
So I have Andrew scheduled at ten o'clock for Tedford. If you'd like, I can skip ahead.
Yep, yes.
So we have the draft decision for the tax abatement for J L L D Trust versus the town of Bremen. That was the abatement hearing that you heard back in August and held a work session following our last meeting, uh, our last commissioner's meeting. So the draft was prepared and sent out to you. And then there were some, um, revisions made to that draft.
Would be a motion first.
I move to approve the abatement decision in J L L D Trust versus Town of Bremen.
Second. Move seconded. Any comments? Then some good additions to that? Strengthen.
I think it addresses our decision.
Any other comments?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
If you want to sign a job copy now?
Yeah.
Please, um.
You mail those out today, right? So they don't.
We usually.
Lose my proposal.
Follow up with it.
That, that really hit the full use of it. Of Gil's period.
You got that one all right?
Yeah.
You're a speed demon today, Bill.
Three, one for us, one for them, one for them.
Only sign two. You're welcome.
Next item I have is a purchase authorization for the purchase of adult education laptops in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred dollars. This is, uh, one of the projects that we work on with our broadband grant funded, um, initiative. We have two of our, our, um, colleagues are contractors and they reach out to different partner agencies in Lincoln and Saget Hawk County. Uh, both counties are covered by the grant. That's why we are including them in this process. And one of the partners that we have is Mary Meeting Adult Education. They do some high set training for our folks at Two Bridges Jail, but they also do high set training in the community as well as other, um, workforce development initiatives and other adult education progress, uh, programs. They have put in a recommendation to purchase twenty laptops and then all of the accessory mouse, mouse pad, headphones, and then a charging station that will accept all twenty of the laptops in a, a classroom setting. So the total amount is eleven thousand one hundred dollars. These are funds that were provided through the grant. It, it will not be any county tax dollars used for the purchase, but I wanted to point out the, the purchase and get your approval before we made that purchase for them.
I'll move to approve the adult education laptop purchase authorization for eleven thousand one hundred dollars.
Second. Move seconded. Any other questions or comments?
Um, so adult ed will actually possess laptops.
Their laptops will become their property.
They're responsible for any, um, service that they need going forward. So that's just given to them.
Exactly. We have a written agreement that they have to sign before we provide the funding to purchase the equipment. And one of the items in that agreement is that it's now they're responsible to maintain and secure the, the equipment in any future repairs that might be needed or upgrades that might be needed. That's on.
That's it. Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to zero in favor.
And just as a little bit more information, as we're saying in this, there's a variety of different municipalities and partner agencies in the counties that we've been, um, trying to encourage them to to be more technically capable or have the equipment that they need to provide better services as they're getting connected to fiber. But that's the next thing for them.
Is there a tab in there? Do we assign?
Always. It's just.
Just.
It's just to show where the list was.
That's under their digital, um, equity type of program.
Through main connectivity and it's part of their digital equity and inclusion and we're trying to reach to folks that might have been left out in the past with digital skills and, uh, resources.
Okay, um, as far as old business, I have no additional information to provide for L C T V's proposal. Um, you asked me to reach out a while back and I still don't have an answer for you. I don't know if you want to keep it on the agenda.
Okay, yes.
Okay, a bunch of looks go back.
I don't, I'm fine for it to hang out a little bit more, but it has been there for a while and nothing's happened.
Right. I was contacted by one of our municipalities asking what the status was and uh, I have a meeting later this week to talk about that more in depth from their, um, town perspective. Uh, the public safety building project, I don't really have much of an update. After the last meeting, we're waiting on the architects and the consultants to be, uh, able to look at our, our, um, review that our planning office has done. They did a a review of all the ordinances and the setback requirements and all of that on the parcels that we've identified. They've done G I S mapping for us and, uh, now the consultants need to look at the regulatory analysis and then we'll take it to the next step after that.
Have they made any commitment as to when they might be?
Well, uh, I know that one of them was on vacation last week, so I suggested some dates that we could do a follow-up meeting, but I haven't heard back because of his vacation. So I'm expecting to hear from them this week.
Are we down to one or two parcels now?
So there's one that's really.
Or is it staying?
It seems it's, it is standing out above the rest of them. I am not an expert in the regulatory analysis piece of it, so I want to get their input on where they think this might be headed after they review all of those regulations. Um, but
Right.
At first glance, this one parcel seems to be more in line with what we're looking for. Uh, there are others that are still on the list and we did that review on all of the ones that are on the list just to make sure that we're doing our due diligence on site selection. Um, but there are some that, that definitely have some challenges. One in particular has some, um, right, or it has some restrictions on what can be built because of its proximity to some protected area and trying to cite a building on that parcel might not be feasible for us.
Do we at least know if each of the parcels are in a zone where this could be built? Right, because that would take it right off the list, right? If it says residential, you know, housing only or something like that in the zones.
Right, so the analysis should identify all of that. And I think that a, a, um, quick meeting with our consultants will allow us to really narrow that list down quite a bit.
Right.
So I'm expecting to have something before the next meeting, an update for you, before our next meeting. Um, and that's all that I had, other than the ten o'clock presentation that we have coming.
Do we have anything on the updates?
I think my only updates, I think I've done a lot of picnics in the last, uh, few weeks with the, the county, um, employee appreciation, one, and then the sheriff's picnic and then, uh, just made an appearance at the uh, gathering down in Westport Island yesterday. Other than that, that's all I have. And just a reminder again that the, uh, convention is on the near horizon.
Two weeks.
I think two weeks.
Can't wait for it to be over. I'm sponsoring a, uh, employee event on Sunday on the seventh at Dolphin Mini Golf in Booth Bay and any county employee and their families that like to, to participate are welcome too, and I'll cover their first round. So it's a game of mini golf and they have a poker run and there's a lot of prizes from local businesses and different things. So you both are also encouraged to come Sunday from nine until eleven.
Yeah. How about an executive session? Do you have anything?
I do have something for executive session. Do you want to do it before the?
Well, we have, I mean, we have plenty of time.
We can go in and, um, yeah.
Do you?
Before ten, I mean, be.
Plenty of time to do it.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure how we do it with the recording.
Can you hit pause Haven? If we have to come back to record after?
Yeah, just probably, uh, put it as if it's ended, but then I'll just come back.
Reboot it and then cut it.
We could step into a different meeting room if you want.
I don't care from my perspective.
Do I can take a walk?
I think we'd want to have the ten o'clock presentation on the recording.
Okay.
Then.
Yeah, I can just pause it basically.
Why would we just pause it then?
I'll do that now.
Okay.
So let's vote to go into executive session.
Move to enter executive session pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six A for discussion of personnel.
Second.
Okay.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'll be back on camera at ten o'clock for.
Next item is the, the Tedford Housing, I guess.
Discussion. Good morning. Just, I don't know how important it is to have the microphone or whatever, but.
Mine can.
Great.
Amplify it, just records.
Great. Well, good morning, everybody. My name is Andrew Lawdy. I'm the executive director at Tedford Housing. We are an anti homelessness agency, uh, serving the southern midcoast region. We're sort of the, the, the closest agency of our kind, uh, providing emergency shelter and homelessness prevention services between, you know, Portland and Rockland. So we're really for a large swath of about forty towns and two hundred thousand residents, uh, the, the first line of defense for this kind of work. And like I said, the only agency of our, of our type. Um, there are some slides, I understand, that, uh, uh, Ms. Kipfer has provided for you here as well as a copy of a letter that I sent last week, which kind of outlines both our work in the region, uh, what's next for the organization as we're in the middle of trying to grow to, to respond to more of the unmet need, uh, in our communities and how we're trying to get there and how we, that we are hoping that, um, counties might play a bit of a part in helping sustain the work, knowing that, uh, there are just many more, uh, people dealing with housing insecurity in our communities than our agency is presently able to really stabilize. And so it just means that statewide and in, and in Lincoln County and in, um, the larger kind of southern midcoast, there are just, you know, more people who are unhoused, uh, than we'd like to see. And of course, that means, you know, more instability for employers, more instability for schools and more instability for the towns themselves, not to mention the impacted households. So, um, I'm happy to take questions at any point along the way, but I'll try to do a quick, efficient run through here if that's helpful.
We'll use this as the slide deck.
Mm-hmm. Great. So, um, just real quickly, as I kind of described a moment ago, uh, this map shows all of the shelters that are located within, well, but as much as I crop the map out, they've, all the shelters between, let's say, Portland up to Ellsworth, and you can see there are different shelters that serve different kinds of populations. So this map shows shelters that serve, um, single adults and shelters that serve families with kids. These are state subsidized shelters. So there are a couple of other shelters. For example, in Lewiston, there are some run by churches that are faith-based and they do not receive state funding in part because they require certain kinds of religious practices to participate. So these are only the shelters that are actually part of the network where we take whoever is in need, regardless of their particular characteristics. And what you can see for Tedford here is a kind of rough catchment area traced in the green bubble there that shows, you know, where's your nearest shelter? If you are, let's say, a family, um, living out of your car or about to be evicted, where is the best, uh, you know, opportunity for you to go to find some place safe to have a roof over your head? And, um, the availability. And the availability of beds for families with kids is actually much, much better than the availability of beds for single adults who might find themselves needing a place to stay and falling on hard times. So you can see Tedford right now, that little red box in the center of the green bubble shows we have 16 adult beds. We're in the middle of building a new facility to expand that. And the bed in that new facility is also going to expand our family shelter. But there are just very, very few other shelter beds to find anywhere on the landscape, unless you go all the way down to Portland, which is not necessarily appealing for a lot of people. You'll notice there's a shelter to the north of us in Augusta that does have 14 adult beds, but those are only for veterans, period. So it's a pretty bleak landscape out there. It's an underserved landscape, even though everyone understands that with the real estate market developing as it has, there's a real unmet need, you know, a real increasing presence of homelessness.
Excuse me, on those boxes that you have there, the red 16, for example, is for?
That's for the capacity of Tedford's adult shelter.
That's the total for, for single family or Indian.
No, the red 16 is for, is the capacity for single adults and the blue six is the capacity for families.
Okay, and in, let's go, I'm going, the next one is in Rockland, I assume.
That's right.
And that is no.
Single.
Single, 11 family.
That's right, you got it. Yeah.
Lincoln County is sort of half and half. It's or maybe a third, a third, a third or something.
That's right, yeah, that's right, that's well said.
It's a bread of life, the Augusta one.
Mm hmm, is right there, yeah, for certain, for certain parts of the county, for sure. So the next slide just gives you a quick little set of pictures showing the main programs. I think Tedford Housing is most known for its emergency shelters because we started as an emergency shelter run by this family called the Tedfords. They gave up their second house. It became the Tedford Shelter. And then over time, as the organization has developed, we've taken a more comprehensive approach to looking at, to trying to prevent homelessness before it starts, which is the most efficient and cheap thing we can do, including providing emergency shelters and even including now we are the landlord for a bunch of permanent housing units that are for households that previously had experienced homelessness, have chronic disabilities and other ongoing obstacles to holding on to sustained housing. So there's kind of a whole collection of programs that we do to try to help people stay housed stably in the region. And you.
Is that, excuse me?
Yes.
Is that page there, healing only with Tedford?
This is just our agency.
Okay.
Yes. And on the far right side here, you'll see that purple little house picture shows two programs. One is a winter warming center, which is something we opened for the first time last winter. It's only open from November through April and it has, you know, different model than this proper shelter. That's a 24 seven operation. And it also names there a Warm Thy Neighbor, which is a heat assistance program. And of course, there are some really great heating assistance programs run by a whole bunch of different agencies, including the heating companies themselves in some cases. And just to put it down in more clear, specific terms in the local scale, you know, over the last few years, where have our program participants, our clients, our guests, our, our long term tenants, where have they come from? In the letter, which I think you guys have a copy of here, there's a list of every town in Southern Andersgagen County, Cumberland County, Northern Cumberland County, Lincoln County, Sagadahock County and other counties around the state, from which we've actually had clients in the past couple of years.
Excuse me, that's not in this.
This just has, shows an excerpt of it just for Lincoln County, just so it's easier to read, yep. So, you know, we've served folks over the past couple of years from 40 towns across the region and even people from further afield. And, you know, in any one given year, you know, you can't be sure whether there will be somebody from Pemaquid who ends up taking advantage of our services, but the next year there might be, right? So we are trying to make the case to folks around the entire region that we provide regional service and we, we think a regional approach to funding it is also a part of smart approach to trying to sustain the work.
The, the wiser just mean that you had somebody from that town, it couldn't be one or 50.
That's right, yeah, these, so these aren't, yeah, this is.
We don't know actually how many people.
Yes, and the question of sort of like, what's my share? How many of us compared to how many of them? That kind of comes up a little bit further along as we march through the information here. This is just, let's see, which, I have it right here, of course I can know. Bum bum bum, okay. Pardon me, I just got myself turned around here. Okay, so the next picture you see. Okay, here we go. So the next picture you see, this, this one here with, which looks like the, the one before with the different color programs on it was just a way to show that these programs with the red boxes around them are the ones that are relevant in Lincoln County because we don't, among the, the 40 or so apartments we own, none of them is based in Lincoln County. So the analysis that I show later on about like how much, where people are coming from and how much money is being spent, it excludes that supportive housing piece. All right, so this is just a reminder of how many people are calling to try to get emergency shelter and how many folks we were able to say yes to and serve versus how many we have to say no to. And it's not a ratio that we like, but that's the reality. So we've known for a long time that an agency like ours needs more capacity. And that's like, as I mentioned before, what we're in the middle of adding. A quick statewide picture, actually, this was in your, yeah, this is in your, this is in your slide deck. What we're seeing also not, is not just more adults that are homeless in Maine, which I think people are used to sort of seeing on the news, let's say, but also kids. So these are kids who are identified by their schools as being homeless. And in many cases, people say, oh, well, it's not such a big deal, this yellow column. Look, kids are doubled up, they're, they're living with grandma, that could be worse, it's not so bad. But right, what we're seeing in the last couple of years is a big increase in actual children who are counted by their school district as living unsheltered at some point in a school year. This doesn't mean you're living unsheltered or with grandma the entire school year, but at some point it's coming across the desk of the principal or the school guidance counselor that this family's in a real crisis and that's just more and more prevalent. The next picture breaks, breaks this down for just the counties that Tedford serves. This is just context, right? So looking at our catchment area of, you know, again, Southern Andersgagen, Lincoln, Sagadahock and Northern Cumberland, these are the tallies counted by the schools over the past few years. You can see there, you know, of course, you guys remember in the news, there was a motel in Warren, that's a three season motel without insulation that was housing people all winter, families, because they felt they could even in the middle of a crisis. And you see that number of 70 homeless kids in Lincoln County in the prior school year. Fortunately, this past school year, that has ticked down slightly. And that's the direction, that's the direction that we want to see things going. The next page is just a quick little summary about our warming center because this is really important to me right now. We're adding hours and amenities to the warming center that is in Brunswick. And last year, we did have people coming from Kennebec County, from Lincoln County, from all, you know, some people would, you know, either whether it was a cab ride that someone put them into or a police escort, people were coming to our warming center because there was no other warming center and they were living in Brunswick or commuting back and forth to the warming center.
Excuse me, we need to say a warming center.
Yes.
Is this a place really where they are living?
No, it is a place where we open up when it starts to get dark and we close in the morning when it's bright again. And it's not a proper shelter with a lot of, you know, our, our real shelters are 24 seven spaces where you can hold your stuff and keep it safe. The warming center is much more just about keeping people alive. It's not as elaborate of an operation and you don't have a way to store your stuff when you leave the building in the morning. And there's nothing that is really yours to hold on to, but it's meant to keep people alive. Because we've had, you know, of course, in Maine and including in, even in Brunswick, people freeze to death out in the elements. That's the thing that we're trying to do with that program is if you can't at least, if you can't provide proper shelter for as many people as you need to, then at least have some basic backstop. That's the warming center. And we think that it was, even though it was full at certain points, it was probably underutilized. We want to make sure there's more awareness of it this winter and we are all, and that's why we're also expanding the hours and the amenities, the food that we're offering there so that it's a more welcoming space and a more stabilizing space, you know, so people have more of their day where they can be warm.
Now, the, this past year, there was a motel in Warren.
Yes.
Where the, apparently the school system, SAD 40, had a several rooms.
Yes.
There for unhoused kids or whatever, however you want to express it.
Yeah.
Did you folks have anything to do with that?
We were not connected to that at all. Everything I knew about that arrangement, I. Yes, from the newspaper, I mean, really just from the newspaper, yeah. So, and those were families who were living there, putting their belongings there, staying overnight, night after night after night and having their own private space to whatever extent. I don't know if there was any sharing of rooms involved. I think it was individual rooms that families had, had privacy, yeah. So you can see, let's see, in the warming center last year, we had guests in the warming center in this little gray table. You don't need to look at this if you don't want to, but this, we have, according to our tallies, we had residents of both Booth Bay, Newcastle and Waldeboro who used the warming center last winter. Now, also, more than half the people who walked into the warming center wouldn't answer a single question about who they were, where they were from. And part of making the resource available to people is that if they don't want to talk to you, you still let them come in and get warm. So there's a little bit of question mark in the data, but we know that people are coming from pretty far away. The next picture is a, is a rendering of a building that we're in the middle of putting together right now. We have a ribbon cutting in mid November, the week before Thanksgiving. Love to see any and all of you there. This is going to be a building that increases the size of our adult shelter and increases the size of our family shelter. And we're going to be full as soon as we can, you know, staff it up and get everybody in there and we're going to be turning people away just like we are now. But it's still a critical enhancement for quality of life in the region for this basic safety net.
How big one is it? How big?
It will have 24 beds for adults and it'll have space for 10 families. So altogether, this building has two separate secure wings with totally separate entrances and it will have 64 total beds in it, including the families and the individual adults. It'll also have all of our offices, so it's kind of a headquarters for the organization. And it's 100% ADA accessible, which is really important. There have a lot of people these days who cannot take a shelter bed when they call and we say, yes, there's a bed for you, it's on the second floor and it's on the top bunk. This building solves that problem.
I didn't catch where you said that was.
This is in East Brunswick, yes, right next to the town line with West Bath. So this is near the Cook's Corner Walmart in Brunswick. And then this is just a little quick picture of how the heck we try to keep the lights on. So this is a scary graph with, with basically you need to worry about three colors. Red, which is philanthropy, that's how we get money from either foundations or individuals. Green, which is money from the state of Maine, which is important for subsidizing some of our programs. And blue, which is federal funding through various streams. And what you can see is across our core programs, the, the shelters, the supportive housing program and the smaller homelessness prevention work, a huge share of it is reliant upon philanthropy and that continues to grow. And if you go to the next picture real quick, this is the same basic info in a slightly scarier or some people think useful format to just show what share of our agency's work is through, is funded by philanthropy. And we're, again, the biggest part of our successful capital campaign to build this new building is also that we've been building these fundraising muscles and that if you go to the next page, you see just something really simple, our overall operating budget year on year, which is, was pretty flat for a long time, around 1.3, 1.4 million bucks a year, maybe one and a half. And all of a sudden, as we've gotten more ambitious and tried to say yes, you know, find a way to do more, that means that our budgetary needs are also rapidly increasing. And that's why we're going to towns and counties to make explicit appeals in a way that this agency never has before. This little page here shows you where the money has been coming from. And, you know, we cannot squeeze blood from the turnip of the federal government or the state government. And so we have squeezed the philanth, as I said a minute ago, that philanthropic part to try to just get more out of our supporters in the community and make sure that our work is understood by more people in the community. So that, you know, you think not only about, you know, is Tedford in my backyard and are they serving my neighbors directly? But also are they serving an improving quality of life in the towns that I love to visit? The towns that I love that my, you know, niece and nephew go, are in or the town that has the great coffee shop? So that's, what you can see here also on this graph of where the money's coming from is that the purple line municipal and county is close to zero and has been close to zero for a long time. So last year, we received $3,000 from towns and $15,000 from one county. And we think one way, one reasonable target for the way forward is to try to fund a modest share of our expenses for this public health infrastructure, maybe 4% of our costs through municipal and county sources. That's trying to be polite and conservative about what's realistic to ask.
Which county was that?
That was Cumberland County. We can probably skip this one, but it just shows why our budget has grown by a million bucks in one year. We've, you know, this big expansion and also a big commitment to the warming center. And then, of course, your old friend inflation. And then finally, this is a rundown of, of just, you know, are we being responsible? Are we dumping new demands on the backs of only taxpayers or what? And this is just a really quick summary of the different tactics we are using to, to bring in additional revenue from state sources, federal sources, other kinds of, various kinds of philanthropy. And then finally, also towns and counties. And I will leave it there. I have a couple cute pictures that I didn't have in this slide on Friday, but they're only on my screen. But if you want, I could walk you through them. They sort of, actually, yeah, if you don't mind, I'll show you these real quick because I think it's positive. So here's a quick breakdown of the populations of the town, of the counties and the towns that we, in our catchment area. As I've defined it, it's a little arbitrary to say, what is Southern Andersgagen County? But whoops, sorry, there we go. Is it moving by itself? Okay, good. You can see Andersgagen County is about 37% of the area, the residents in that area. Northern Cumberland County accounts for about a third. Sagadahock and Lincoln together account about, count for about a third of the population in this overall catchment area. And then when you look at actual, you know, who's showing up for the programs and which programs are cheap and which are, which are most expensive. This is really important. So of all the people we serve, you know, we say yes to whoever walks through the door if we can. You can see the largest share from Cumberland, about a third. Then Sagadahock, that Lincoln is the smallest slice of that pie. Andersgagen residents here at 9%. And then a big chunk, about a third of our, of our residents come from somewhere further afield. Or maybe even we don't have a straight answer on where they're from. But that means that when we go around trying to pass the hat, there are a third of our people where we can't go to, you know, Rustic and say, hey, there's a guy from your town, we gotta, can we please have some compensation for that, right? That's not how it works. So when you eliminate that slice of the bar graph or of the pie chart and just, you know, expand it all in between Cumberland, Sagadahock, Lincoln and Andersgagen, it looks like this. Does that make sense? So I would say that as of today, when we try to make an ask, we're asked saying that Lincoln County residents have been historically, in the past couple of years, attributable to about 6% of our budgetary outlays. It's a pretty small slice. Now, what's the fair way to divide up an ask? Is the fair way to divide it up based on who has the most population, you know? Or is the fair way based on who's using most resources? What I'm doing here is, is a really simple way to try to pick a number is to go halfway between. So literally, if your population share is about 15% of the, of the service area and your resource share is about 6% of the area, then the meat, the middle of that is about 10%. And it's kind of arbitrary, but at least it's kind of coherent. So that's, that's the approach right now. And again, we're trying to get all of these municipal and county asks to total up to 4% of our outlays of, of our needs. Because we're just trying to be more creative, find more creative ways to keep the lights on. And we know that the community really needs it.
How aware are the communities of this?
That's the perfect question, thank you for asking that. I think awareness is, is a matter of reputation more than it is of information. And here's what I mean. If a police chief calls and, or a hospital administrator calls and says, we need, we need a bed for this person, can you help us? And the answer is no, 10 times in a row, then even though they have the awareness that we're, that we exist, if the reputation we, we earn is like Tedford says no, then it's seen as a non-resource, right? And my goal right now with our expansion and with other ways that we're approaching staffing and just kind of our attitude is to find ways to say yes more. And so I want to have a reputation where people say, yeah, if I call Tedford, there's a good chance they're going to find a way to help me. And even though they've known about us before, the awareness might have been there. What I want to have be different is the reputation and the experience of relationship with the agency.
Would you request for a bed from a bed? Would you ask for a bed from a, from a police department or a hospital? You make, you mentioned those two.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Yeah, of course. We, we get requests all the time.
I'm just saying, in, in the case of Lincoln County, there's only four police departments. But of course you have the deputies, the sheriff's department.
Mm-hmm.
Which covers all the time.
Mm-hmm. I'm not sure I'm following the question though. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just wondering, Lincoln County, which is on the periphery of your territory.
Sure, sure.
How aware are these communities of Tetford's services?
Well, for example, so I've met, you know, one of the things that's important is that our outreach case manager is, spends one day a week at the ECHPs, the Ecumenical Council for Homelessness Prevention, their food pantry in Newcastle. So we have an ongoing presence in Newcastle and we serve families that come in to use the food pantry. And that case manager can say, you know, can introduce themselves and ask those households how else that, what are their needs they might have that aren't just about food and find a way to support them. A lot of what we do is helping people stabilize their housing situation through, you know, what case managers are, which are just experts and resources, right? So it's not necessarily stabilizing them by offering the shelter bed and having the family move into the shelter. It's much more like, oh, you have rental that's in arrears? We can help you with some rental assistance. You have a place you want to move into, but you can't afford the security deposit? We can offer you some help with that security deposit. So that's our existing most immediate, consistent presence in Lincoln County right now is that Newcastle role.
Which is, which is a very good food pantry. I'm not questioning that at all.
Sure.
They provide a very good service, but for a relatively small area.
Mm-hmm. I see. Sure.
Whereas we have food pantries in the other communities.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense. Go ahead.
The community navigator is also very much aware of this.
Okay, so they're playing a role.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Right. It's important for all the different agencies to know that we're out there.
This is a new, this is new. I'm not sure if you're aware of our navigator system.
This is the program that Karen Ann.
This is Karen Ann's. Yeah. So Karen Ann and I first met probably two years ago at the Y. You know, she talked to me about her work. We talked about her history of referrals to Tetford and housing, Tetford Housing and which ones had been successful and unsuccessful and how to make sure we had a stronger connective tissue and, you know, healthy Lincoln County. Those folks have been at their brown bag lunches, just trying to make sure we are aware of what they would like seeing from us and what they'd like to see from us and how to build that. You know, there's always going to be, there's always, it's always going to be a stretch to say, boy, would somebody from Booth Bay really want to take a shelter bed anyway in East Brunswick? Like, what if they have to go to work in the morning, right? But I mean, I accept that and look at the map, they don't have anywhere else to go, right? These guys, you know, in Bridgeton, they don't want to come to the Tetford Shelter, even though they're in Cumberland County, but they have nowhere else to go. So our job is, now, of course, there's other tactics besides operating shelters, right? You can do more local institutions of some kind, but for the moment, as a matter of infrastructure, you know, both the Lakes Region and, you know, my example, Booth Bay, are kind of underserved on this stuff, right? So we're trying to be smart and collaborative in, as we evolve the work going forward.
So what I'm wondering is, what is your specific strategic plan? And do you more specifically envision building shelters in these more further away communities? So they're not driving from East Booth Bay all the way to Brunswick.
We don't, definitely don't have any, any infrastructure plans beyond the one that we're in the middle of trying to finish right now, put it that way. You know, there was a, there has been a series of public meetings in Western Cumberland County in that Lakes Region where they were looking at what is their needs and would they build some, would they find somebody to try to build a shelter there? And I think that conversation is kind of frankly cooled and fizzled, even as there are people, too many people living in the woods out there, right? So our, our obligation is to be responsive to what communities are asking for and trying to do themselves, right? Help people have healthy, have useful conversations that are constructive and help them get to a goal that's feasible, whatever that looks like. We're just here to serve. I don't have an agenda.
Okay. And then for the folks who do spend some time in your shelters, is there programs available for them to help figure out how to maybe change the course or find housing or what the issue is that brought them there and how to address that?
Thank you. No, that's a great question. Yeah. The core service that Tetford provides truly, and I should have put it in these packets, more than any building, more than, you know, any apartment, the core thing we do is this thing called case management. You have somebody who knows you, knows your situation, knows what have been the obstacles to your stability in the past and is going to help you overcome those obstacles and get on a trajectory toward, you know, stable housing and a healthier life, like a potential, you know, realizing your potential in the future. So the case manager is doing all these things. For some people, it's, you know, literally like getting help with literacy and passing your high set or your GED. For some people, it's all about childcare. For some people, you're working full-time. For others, you need help finding work, right? For some people, it's, I'm eligible for Medicaid, but I have never accessed those benefits because it's too overwhelming. So it's a lot of variety in what a case manager is helping you do. It could be something as simple as giving you the money so you can get a birth certificate that you've lost or a new set of tires so you can get to work. It's all those things.
So how big's your staff?
Our staff right now is about 20 and we're going to be about 40 by six months from now.
Full-time?
Uh, no, it's a mix, but pretty close to me. I would say the actual F, full-time equivalents right now is probably 17 and going forward, it'll be like 36. So that, a lot of that is just because the shelters are going to be staff 24/7 and be sort of in a more safe. We've been, we've been doing the bare bones thing for a long, long time and we're starting to be a little more, you know, we need to be more professional, so. So I appreciate your consideration. I know it's, you know, a messy issue, but truly, as that graph from the schools shows, there's just a lot of regular people who are very much rent burdened in this environment and finding themselves homeless when they never thought they would be. And our goal is to make those episodes of homelessness as short as possible, get people back on their feet and on with the rest of their lives and.
That way, Steve is the biggest cause, is that rent burden, is that really hit?
Absolutely. I mean, the, the number one, right, it used to be you could be a poor person or have a complicated life or just be, you know, not very high wage and you could have a dumpy apartment or even like a rooming house situation going on. Now those are off the table. There is no dumpy apartment, at least it's not cheap and there's probably no rooming house either. And so people who used to be poor but stably housed are now poor and not stably housed.
It, you know, for many of us who never experienced this.
Mm-hmm.
We're becoming more aware of how many people are homeless.
Yes.
And it's almost overwhelming.
Yes.
When you think of it. I mean, in, what do you, where do, where do these people go?
I appreciate you saying that. I, I think everybody here can think of somebody they know whose basic stability has been threatened by the way that the housing market has become. And, you know, there are, there are, there are a lot of different kinds of answers and there are some really smart people in Maine trying to solve these problems statewide and locally. Most basically, they got to build housing and they got to build housing for regular people. They can't just keep building luxury apartments. They got to build housing for people in the bottom third of the economic distribution. It's really simple. They deserve to have housing. Your barista, your home health aide, your cashier, they all deserve housing, right?
They have to have it.
Yeah.